Okay, I'd like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, May 10, 2010 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
City Clerk Patterson here, council members Ratty here, Salerno.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City manager Carey.
Here.
City attorney Adams.
Here. Okay, if you'd all rise now for Reverend Kathy Hopner, St. Paul's Episcopal Church, to give the invocation. Welcome Reverend.
Thank you. Let us pray. Almighty God, send down upon these people who hold office in this city the spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice, that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. Grant to God that your holy and light spirit and spirit may so move every human heart, and especially the hearts of the people of this city, that barriers which divide us may crumble, suspicions disappear, and hatred cease, that our divisions being healed we may live in justice and peace. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Reverend for those kind words. If you'd remain standing for the pledge of allegiance, please. Mr. Kerrigan, will you lead us?
Yeah, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is comments from the public. If you'd like to speak under comments from the public, please fill out one of these cards and we'll get you right on. You have three minutes, I have only one from Relly Seals.
That's Kelly.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Kelly.
Can I say yours?
No, no, come on down, have a seat, make sure the microphone's on. Give us your words of wisdom and you have three minutes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. My name's Kelly Seals, and I'm here to address the council this afternoon regarding keeping chickens in Sparks. It's not permitted in residential areas per Sparks Municipal Code 20-29, 20 dot 29. I prepared a handout which you should have with just some basic information. The first set of bullets talks about the regulations in different areas in the state of Nevada and where chickens are. There's a highlighted, are permitted and where they're not. There's a few highlighted areas there. Just with our immediate area in Reno, it is permitted to keep chickens, as well as in incorporated Washto County, it is not permitted in Sparks. So our surrounding areas, it is allowed, just not in Sparks. Following, I give a brief summary of common concerns for allowing chickens, and as well as how well-written regulations could help alleviate some of those concerns. Noise can be controlled by not allowing people to keep roosters, by limiting the number of hens allowed. It could also be mandated that hens are kept in a coop in a certain distance from other dwellings. There are some health concerns that people brought up. The research I did did not show any significant health concerns. Simple hand washing can alleviate most of those concerns. Odor is also a concern people have, and while a chicken coop can have an odor, so can dogs if they're, if people do not pick up after them. Some of the regulations can include a phrase about keeping the coop clean. The other parts of regulations as far as keeping them enclosed and in sanitary conditions, and in a certain area away from other dwellings can help with odor. I just wanted to provide that basic information, and request that the Sparks City Council move forward on making some amendments to the code regarding keeping chickens in Sparks.
Okay. Questions for Kelly? Ms. Ratty?
I just would like to support Ms. Seals' request and ask staff to look into this. I've had a number of residents in Ward 1 ask about the same issue and be in support of it. And I'd also like to see if while we're at it, we could just go ahead and throw in the bees as well, because I've had a number of requests about beekeeping in the area. I think we're seeing a lot of progress in a local foods movement in our community and across the nation. This is a key component of that, and I'd be very supportive in moving forward.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Adams, did you look at our?
I did.
You didn't?
I did.
Okay.
I did. Livestock means bees kept in collection of hides or colony, all sheep or animals, llamas, domestic fowl or birds. So, I did look at it.
And are they allowed or not?
No.
Okay. So will, you have direction from council, Mr. Carey?
Yes, we'll prepare an agenda item for Councilman Ratty to request the council vote on initiating a change in our zoning ordinance, and that'll be prepared by the Community Development Department as part of Title 20.
Okay. Kelly, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Schmidt, wait a minute, we got one question. Mr. Schmidt?
No, it's not, it's not a question. I, you know, I know there's a lot of important issues in the city out there, and, you know, I've never heard of an issue pro or con against this, so I kinda caught off guard with this if, you know, there was previous deliberations going on, or, you know, whatever. I'm not aware of that, but can we get a list of complaints that the city's ever officially received on this in the last 10 years? Because, I mean, he better place, I've never seen a complaint or concern about it. I've never had a constituent call me. I've walked 15,000 homes around here, and I've never had an issue on this thing, so I'm just kinda concerned where this is all coming from. So if we could get, do some research and see if we've ever received an official complaint from the city of Sparks about bees or chickens, either way, complaints or for or against, I'm just kinda curious about that.
Mr. Adams?
Now, is this, I heard councilwoman Ratty say something about home consumption. Is this for the purpose of slaughtering and eating and?
No, many regulations do.
Chicken fights or?
Many regulations do stipulate that it cannot be raised for slaughter, and they are for most people, production of eggs. A lot of people, they can move the coop around, and it can help keep pests away, and whole foods movement type thing.
Any other animals you want me to look at while I'm at it?
It's not my issue, but I have also heard that there are people that would like to keep pigeons, like racing pigeon, but that's not my, that's not my interest.
Okay. Mr. Kerrigan?
So what is your interest, and where do you live in Sparks?
I live just at the Sparks and Los Altos area, and I would like to keep two to three backyard hens. For eggs.
I mean, to raise for eggs?
For eggs.
Have, I don't know if Washto County has any health regulations about this. Do you know?
Well, it is permitted in Reno and unincorporated Washto County, so if the Washto County Health District has any health regulations, I'm not aware of them.
Would we be subject to those if we, if there were?
In Sparks?
If Washto County said that chickens and things like that were a health hazard?
I would guess, since we're part of Washto County, but I'm not sure.
Well, they're allowed in Reno.
Yeah, if they're allowed in Reno, unincorporated Washto County, it would affect the whole area, I'm guessing.
So we can't fry them, we just?
Just for nice pets and eggs.
Well, you know, if we're gonna look at this thing, is that what you just want? You don't want them to be slaughtered, you just want them for eggs? So you'd want the, if we did change the ordinance to make it for egg consumption only? No roosters?
No roosters.
Cooped up in a pen?
In a coop.
I'm not sure Pete is gonna like that, but, okay.
Well, there's very nice coops. They don't need a lot of space.
Okay, now I'm just thinking about my neighbors if I threw up some chickens in my backyard.
Should we have coops regulated too? Size and quality, lighting, heat in the winter, fireplace, things like that?
Because I can see that, you know, that's gonna be a problem.
Well, let's just bring it back for the council to discuss on an agenda item, and we'll make a decision later. Mr. Schmidt?
Well, I just, you know, and I guess that's my item I wanna talk about, we wanna bring it back to talk about, because, you know, in the course of five minutes, you know, the letter we were handed out has everything to do with chickens, and then we went to bees, and then we went to pigeons, you know, is this a Pandora's box to say we're gonna open it up? I mean, you know, does everybody who has pot-bellied pigs wanna come on in and say, "I wanna have that as my livestock I wanna keep?" And, you know, I just get back to the whole issue that I've never heard of this being a problem. And, you know, and I'm not sure where on Los Altos you live, you know, there are some houses up there that have some large lots, but, you know, most of Los Altos areas are 6,000 square foot lots, and that wouldn't meet the county requirements. I know that Reno, they're allowed wherever they want to, as long as nobody complains about them. And the city of Sparks, they're allowed in an agricultural setting. We have, you know, very minimum agricultural land in the city of Sparks. I'm just concerned to say, okay, we wanna look into this thing, you know, by the time we actually get finished with it, what is it gonna cover? I mean, what are we looking on at? I know we've gone to three items already. You know, I think we need to be very careful about what we're doing here, getting it out of hand, because the next thing you know, that well-intentioned, single purpose now becomes a public nuisance over the entire city. And we don't have a noise ordinance, so if the chicken makes noise, there's nothing we can do about it. Am I correct, Mr. Adams?
Well, you've always got the nuisance ordinances as well, but there really not much to crawl about either.
That's...
You're a pro today.
I think we fried this one up enough.
Yeah, let's see how much out of proportion we can blow this item. Ms. Ratty?
To be clear, my request will be to bring an agenda item to review chickens and bees, which are both part of a local foods movement. Pigeons for pets or racing is a complete another issue, and I will not be asking to bring that forward. Then also, to the point made in public comment, what we've seen, and I went to a session on this at the last League of Cities Conference, what we've seen is cities who've implemented good ordinances allowing chickens and allowing bees have seen a higher quality of implementation, and therefore less complaints. The idea of having an ordinance is so you can make sure that they do have appropriate facilities, that they do not bother your neighbors, that they do not cause health problems. And they are allowed, Cincinnati, just passed one, in the city of Cincinnati, urban Cincinnati, you can have chickens. And so I think what I'm asking is staff to investigate it, pros cons, let's see what works in other communities, but this is a national movement to allow folks to be more in control of their own food sources, and I fully support it, and I'm asking staff to look into it. Bees and chickens at that point.
Okay, anyone else under, thanks Kelly. Appreciate it. You got us all wound up, but that's good. Anybody else under public comment? Okay, I see a wide variety of young people, young adults in the back row. Could you please come forward and give us your name and let us know why you're here? Oh, you didn't think you were gonna get a free ride, did you?
We're from Reno High School.
I knew it.
Want me to come down there?
Sure. You know, I knew you were from Reno High School, and I keep, we always get people from Reno High School, and I'm wondering why Reno High School, we don't get anybody from Sparks, why don't you go to the Reno City Council meetings?
Because they're at the school in the morning.
Okay. Well, you could get out of school. Yeah.
No, that's, that's, that's why we can't call by your education.
Okay, give us your name, obviously you're here for government class.
Ah, hello, my name is Melissa Seabert. I'll be the representative for our Reno High School students in the back row, and we are here because our government teacher requires us to get three hours of community service at city council meetings, so that's why we are present today.
So you're gonna stay for the whole meeting then?
What time does it end? 'Cause I have homework to do.
It'll be over, should be over early today.
Early?
Yes.
What time is early?
Seven, 7:30, 8 o'clock?
You're kinda shy, aren't you?
I can see why they picked you as the representative.
Well, I just kinda elected myself, but...
So you're so hard.
Okay. Well, thanks for being here, we appreciate it. Hopefully we won't bore you too much, but we should be through in an hour and a half.
Oh, no, you guys are an interesting group. I already like it from the beginning.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly. Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is recommendation to approve meeting minutes of the budget workshop of April 26. Any additions or corrections? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Moved to approve.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve the budget workshop minute meetings of April 26, 2010. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is proclamations. First, we have one for, that's targeted directly to me, for Older Americans Month. Anyone here to receive this? Come on up, sir. I'll read the proclamation, and you can say a few words if you'd like. Whereas Sparks is a community with 9,017 citizens aged 65 and older, and whereas older adults in Sparks are among our most treasured, I want you to remember that, our most treasured resources, united by historical experiences, strengthened by diversity, and interpreting events through varied perspectives and backgrounds to bring wisdom and insight to our city. And whereas increasing numbers of adults are reaching retirement age and remaining strong and active for longer than ever before. And whereas older adults in Sparks deserve recognition for the contributions they have made, and will continue to make to the culture, economy, and character of the city and our nation. And whereas we can provide that recognition and respect by improving the quality of life for older Americans by increasing their opportunities to remain active and engaged in community life, providing individualized services and support systems to maintain their dignity and independence, and combating against, combating ageist attitudes by honoring their past, present, and future contributions. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 2010 Older Americans Month, and urge every citizen to take time this month to honor our adults and the professionals, family members, and volunteers who care for many of them. The recognition and involvement of older Americans can enrich our city's quality of life. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm Grady Tarbott, and Director of Washto County Senior Services. You also find, we passed out copies of the Older Americans Month brochure, and the city of Sparks is a partner with Washto County, Incline Village, with City of Reno Parks and Recreation, in putting on a wide array of events and activities that we invite everyone to. I also want to thank this council for its partnership at the City of Sparks Senior Center. Washto County provides the activities, and City of Sparks built the building many years ago, and rents it to us for a dollar a year, a rate of rent that we sincerely appreciate in these times. So again, thank you for the proclamation, and thank you for your support.
Thanks, Grady. Before we do yours, Wayne, we need to approve the agenda. So, looking for a motion, or anybody wanna take anything out of order? Mr. Schmidt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve the agenda is outlined by staff.
Second, Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the agenda is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Thank you, Wayne. City of Sparks proclamation, whereas public works services, public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives, and whereas the support of an informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of our public works programs and components, such as engineering, design, construction and traffic, maintenance, traffic safety collection, facilities, streets, and fleet, and water, wastewater collection, treatment, and reuse. And whereas the health and safety and comfort of this community greatly depend on these facilities and services. And whereas the quality and effectiveness of our public work services and facilities, as well as their planning, design, construction, maintenance, and operation, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of our public work staff. And whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works departments is materially influenced by the community's understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 16 to the 22nd, 2010, National Public Works Week, Public Works Above, Below, and All Around You, and call upon all residents and civic organizations to recognize the contributions which public works officials make every day to our health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Thanks, Wayne.
Thank you, Mayor Martini and the council for the recognition. Appreciate the proclamation, and on behalf of all the Public Works employees and dedicated Sparks staff.
Thank you for keeping us moving, Wayne. Appreciate it. Okay, next is a proclamation for Bike to Work Day, and I thought it would be appropriate for Ms. Ratty, who's the only one that owns a bicycle on this council, so, or actively uses one. Go ahead, Julia.
Whereas commuters who travel by bicycle employ a clean, quiet, and efficient mode of transportation while helping to reduce harmful exhaust pollutants, improving air quality, and saving on fuel costs associated with driving to work and school, and whereas today the promotion of bicycling as an alternative, non-polluting form of transportation will enhance the image of the city of Sparks as an environmentally conscious city with diverse transportation options, attract bicycle tourists to our community, and contribute to the safety of bicyclists by making drivers more aware of their presence, and whereas moderate physical activity such as bicycling on the part of employees can be a benefit to employers by reducing healthcare costs, decreasing absenteeism, and increasing productivity, and whereas biking to school is a great way to introduce children to the joys of cycling in a safe environment, and biking is a fun and independent way to explore the community, and whereas the city of Sparks commands all participants of Bike to Work and Bike to School Week. Commuters can register at www.bike-nevada.org. We encourage all participants to observe all safety measures, including wearing a helmet and obeying all traffic laws. Now therefore, I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2010, Bike to Work and Bike to School Week, and encourage Sparks residents to leave the car at home and commute by bicycle.
Please, give us your name for the record and say a few words, please.
Carol Perry. I am production specialist for the Regional Transportation Commission, and I'm joining.
I am Lauren Grimes. I'm the State Bicycle and Pedestrian Programs Manager.
We're two members of a coalition of organizations that come together under the name the Truckee Meadows Bicycle Alliance to help promote bicycling because of the benefits it offers the community and business people through decreased health costs and increased productivity of their employees, and then individuals through increased mobility options and increased personal health. Would like to thank the mayor and the council members for the proclamation, particularly Julie Ratty has been very supportive of us in expanding our efforts this year. This is the first year that we've gone to a week. It's our fifth annual celebration, and we're very excited about that and thankful for the support of the council. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thanks for being here, we appreciate it. Okay, we have one more proclamation that's not on the agenda, but I'm going to read it anyway. Mr. Sterns?
Can I say something quick?
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. I did just wanna point out there is a bike to school component of that as well, so I hope all of you in the back row will register and ride your bike to school at least once, get started early. Great, absolutely great. And then, did wanna point out on May 17th at 10:00 AM, we'll be doing a city hall to city hall ride to kick off the week, and that Ron Smith has agreed to join me, Councilman Dave Alazi, Councilman Dan Guston, and Commissioner Kitty Jung to ride our bikes from Sparks City Hall to the Reno City Hall, and that we will be highlighting the new separated bike path facility on Victorian Avenue and getting to show that off to the community as well. And thank Adam Mayberry, our Public Information Officer, for his support on that project. Thank you.
I didn't know Harley-Davidsons were allowed on this bike. Isn't that what you ride and run?
Mine's got a motor on it, that's all I know.
Okay. All right, come on down, Michael. This is a proclamation for appropriately National Train Day. Whereas on May 10, 1869, in the state of Utah, the Golden Spike was driven into the final tie that joined the Central Pacific and Union Pacific Railways, creating the first transcontinental railroad. And whereas that transcontinental railroad was a fundamental factor in the growth and success of Sparks, Nevada, which soon became known as the Rail City. And whereas Amtrak celebrates National Train Day to raise awareness of the vital role rail plays in the nation's transportation system. And whereas more than just a great way to travel, Amtrak is energy efficient. Traveling by rail contributes less per passenger mile to greenhouse gas emissions than either cars or planes. Now therefore, I, Gino, our Martini Mayor of the city of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim May 8, 2010, National Train Day. Go ahead, Michael, just give us your name for the record and explain National Train Day to us.
My name is Michael Sterns, and National Train Day, which took place on Saturday, was the third annual National Train Day put on by Amtrak. Within about five weeks ago, we, I was asked to come together with another gentleman named Tim Elum, who is the conductor on an Amtrak train between here and Waimaka. And he, we've kinda put the event together over in Reno this year. We had over 300 people come by, lots of exhibitors, and plenty of action throughout the day. It was a well-received event, however, with just five weeks, we didn't really get to where we wanted to be. Now we've worked with Adam Mayberry, and we're starting to talk about next year. We wanna continue this and bring some events over here to the Sparks area, and we even had the Aglina High School Band welcome the Zephyr, California Zephyr Number Five, coming in from Chicago. And then we had a Masterworks Corral also participate in the opening of the day, and also Councilman Dan Guston came in and spoke for us at that time. But next year, we're gonna go and make it an event in both locations, and we're going to obviously make it even bigger and better. So with your support, we're looking forward to our second one, and including some stops over here and showcasing some of the great rail history that is existing in this area. So thank you very much for your time, and we sure appreciate your support, and look forward to working with everyone next year.
Thanks, Michael. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, moving on, I see we have some other young gentlemen here in the audience. Could we maybe get them to come up and get an introduction? Jim, could you?
Don't need to, they can introduce themselves.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay.
The whole world's watching you on TV, yeah?
Yeah, there's only 2 million people watching, so don't worry about it. Come on up, send to the microphone and just give us your name and tell us what you're doing here today.
Dallas Moss. We're trying to, we're like writing notes on what you guys are planning and doing today.
Is this for Boy Scouts or something?
Yes.
Oh, great. Okay, great. Boston Red Sox fan?
Yes, I am, and my name is Ryan Murphy, and we, I too am here to pass off and take notes about what you're doing for Boy Scouts.
And Ryan, don't you worry, Boston will do better.
Yes, they will.
They did good last night though, didn't they?
Yes.
Good, okay. And you, son?
My name's Jacob Ross, and I'm with them, so...
Okay. All right, thanks all of you for being here, we appreciate it. Okay, let's move on to consent items. Anybody wanna pull a consent item 5-1 through 5-4? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve consent items 5.1 through 5.4.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the consent items is outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, next is general business item 6.1, consideration and possible approval of the city's five-year capital improvement plan for fiscal years beginning July 1, 2010. Mr. Cobb? I saw you in a tie again today, I knew you'd be up here.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm here before you this evening to discuss the outline of the city's five-year CIP and give you an overview of really what we're looking at next year as far as projects in the fiscal year 2010, 2011. I'll do these slides for you. If you have any questions, please don't hesitate, and I'll do my best to answer them for you. First off, as far as transportation projects, a lot of discussion has been going around about funding sources and where, and where we get these funds and how we tackle these projects. For the 1401, which... the 1401, which is transportation fund, the funds that come through for these projects are gas taxes and franchise fees from Sierra, Tamaulipas, and that nature. It's very specific in guidelines how we can spend that money. With that, when we identify projects, we have a couple, or several ways that we do this. It's through our pavement management program, our pavement quality team, which is made up of our maintenance and engineering staff, and as well as we take input from you as the council and citizens' concerns. So we're to evaluate how we're going to tackle the next five years, and most specifically this coming fiscal, is we look at all these and look at what's called our pavement condition index, our PCI rating. And that really develops out how we'll tackle the next five years and how we're going to do our roads, whether we're going to do slurry seals, corrective where you'd mill an overlay, or full rehab. With that, next year, we do have under a corrective rehabilitation about $2.4 million that has been identified. The following roads are a part of that project, which include three-inch mill and overlay, or four-inch full depth. I've identified these streets here. I wanted to give you an idea of what we're looking at tackling in the next year. A lot of this here, again, is based on that pavement management program, our quality team, and then even input from yourselves. Next, in our preventative program, this is actually your annual slurry seals, okay? We're looking at with this expenditure, about 1.9 million square feet of roadway, we'll get a slurry seal. This is a preventative part of our five-year program and a part of our maintenance of our roadways, and following the guidelines of how to do slurry seals, mill and overlays, and rehabs to get the longest life out of our streets. Additionally, I wanted to point out, as a capital expenditure under this program, we're looking at doing a brine system vehicle upgrades. This is about a $285,000 cost, which will be fully reversed by the CMAC program. This will get us a 10,000 gallon brine tank, and then six slidens for our trucks down at the yard. And this will help us with our snow and ice from operations in the winter. NDOT has had some very good success on Pyramid and some of the major roadways, and that's where we would look to identify the use of this. It's somewhere in ideas of Sparks Boulevard, Vista Boulevard, highly traveled. Get this down before the snow hits within a certain timeframe, and it really helps with that program and snow and ice control. Utility projects. I want to follow up right behind transportation, because the next two years are really challenged by what's happening in transportation. A lot of your transportation between RTC and ourselves with RTC 5, what projects they're doing, let alone what we have coming in in gas tax and franchise fees for road projects, we're really taking our utility projects, specifically sewer and even some storm drain, and using our assessments. The funding sources that come for utility are your fees that you pay quarterly, connection fees for new, affluent use fees, people that are on the fluent system, different parks in nature, or they get it for construction wiring, not a lot at the moment, and then state revolving fund loans. With the identification of projects here, we're really using our video assessments. Our maintenance crews have done a phenomenal job, engineering staff going back through and reviewing these to identify truly what issues we have. We're really trying to hammer this home with all the road projects. It's smart business to sit here and look at where these road projects are going, really identify these assessments, and do we need to replace the pipe underground? Because right now, you'll have one fund paying for the road. If we need to replace that pipe now, just get it now when there's another source paying for the roadway. Don't double your cost and do the pipe by itself. Also, we have studies identified deficiencies that are an impact to the citizens or properties, and a lot of that's coming from our flood studies and where we're headed with that. Also, engineering and maintenance staff reviewing different service and costs we've had throughout the years, problem areas, whether it be from cleaning sewer lines, or do we have areas on hillsides that are draining and causing a lot of dirt and debris coming onto the roadway, plugging storm drains, stuff of that nature, that help us really prioritize this. And again, here again, council and citizen concerns. A lot of times, you will hear issues and problems. We need to go take a look at them. If it's really an issue, we'll bring it back to you and tell you, hey, this is how we're going to handle this. Some of the projects under sewer, I just wanted to point out several here, that between Quail, York, East Richards, and Greenbrier, we're coordinating these with either our own street projects or RTCs. This is where, like I said, I wanted to point out, we're trying to be very smart with the money. Let's use the money. Somebody else is paying for the street, the pipe is in a deficiency, that we need to replace it while we're doing this. Do it now, or we don't have to pay that additional cost. Yes, sir?
Yeah, Chris, I just wanted to talk a little more about, you know, coordination with RTC, and their funds are increasing, and Reno doesn't have the utility fund, so actually some of the projects from Reno are being shifted over to Sparks because they don't have, and that's going to deplete our utility fund that much faster. What, I know we're covered this year, but what do we look like for next year?
The next couple of years, we actually look very well. It's the out years where we have to watch and see what goes on with this economy and how volatile it is, and how that affects the fund as we spin down our balance. And then, like I said, we're trying to be very cognizant of what's going on in the fund, and how it's spent, and is a true deficiency in the pipe. So that's why engineering staff is working with maintenance, really looking at these assessments hard to determine if that pipe's got to be replaced, and what is the impact if we don't replace it.
Because what I want to make sure that doesn't happen is that utility funds deplete too fast. And when we give up some money that RTC's, you know, for doing a road repair, that it goes to the county or goes someplace else, you know, so for, you know, you're absolutely right. That saves us a lot of money not having to go back and redo the street when we do these utilities. So it's very smart for us to plan that out ahead. So, and I don't know if you can concentrate on that as a snapshot and get something to the council about how many months or years ahead you see we are, that if Reno fails to, you know, fund their utility account, those projects are going to keep going. And I just want to make sure we don't turn away any RTC dollars because we can't fund utility accounts.
Absolutely. And I'll take a look at that, and we're working actually with our utility coordination as well. It's a group that meets with RTC and the various utilities, because they also can dictate what can happen in Reno and in Sparks, because NV Energy and Tamaulipas are also looking at trying to get their stuff accomplished. So it is a very delicate balancing act. This year, we were very fortunate. We were in a position to work with RTC and have the ability to really get some projects moved up. Also, RTC stepped up and did some things that needed to move them forward, where we really didn't need pipe, but there were certain items that may usually not be reimbursed, but they're going to take care of.
And I just want the, you know, the council to be aware that, you know, if this does come up, that we need some money, we can find some money at the benefit of doing this. So, thank you.
Next is storm drain. A lot of the same efforts are being put into this with RTC, as well as wanted, I wanted to identify was the FEMA, the Community Rating System, and Community Assistant Visit, flood mitigation. This is part of our rating system and how we keep our insurance costs down and providing flood insurance. With this, our most recent visit, there's been some properties identified in industrial area, and then we're also working on the northern part of Sparks, the northeast part of Sparks, and some issues identified up there. This is what this is, to be intended to be used, is working with FEMA to get these areas corrected. York Way, this is one that's coordinated with RTC, our annual curb gutter and sidewalk drainage inlet project. We've had a lot of success in our inner city with this, a lot of areas that have really just been hit hard over the years, and we're able to improve them. I think we've had a lot of successes in Zephyr Way this year. I'd be happy to take anybody out there and show them, this really is a facelift. This program, it really brings the neighborhood up, especially when we're able to tie it in with some of our pavement programs, and we're able to not only do the curb gutter and sidewalk, but we're also able to do the streets. The drainage swells in Moton Auto Park, that's one of the last things we have as far as city property up in the Vista's area, that it's just an unmaintainable swale in the rear with the depletion of our maintenance staff. This is one area that we've got to finalize this area so that our people can get in there and rapidly clean these things out, and we're not affecting any properties below. Sora and Greg Court, these are both issues that were identified, I believe, not only through our maintenance, but council input. And these are part of the debris issues and some drainage things that we need to clean up, so it doesn't affect residences and properties and the roadways. The last one on here is the North Truckee Drain Relignment Phase One. This is going to be funded not only by the flood fees collected, but ideally by the federal government. There's a Desert Lakes grant that we've put in for $5 million. We need to get that grant to make this first phase to go. So this is, Phase One is contingent on receiving that, and that's a federal fund. So that doesn't come from anywhere but federal, as well as using a portion of our flood fee that we collect for that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chris, we haven't done the bond on that yet, have we?
I'm sorry?
We haven't done any bonding yet with that. That money is pay-as-you-go right now.
Yes, sir. It's a pay-as-you-go. And this would be this portion. If we got that grant, our flood fee portion would not be bonded. It would be a pay-as-you-go.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Ron Smith.
Phase One, what is Phase One?
Phase One, we're looking at identifying both in the industrial area and the south of the freeway, as well as north. And we need to identify which impact for this amount of money would be the best for the industrial area.
And I thought we've already done that. I thought the design...
We have a full design of it, but breaking it into a phase, we're identifying which area is going to be most beneficial. And this is the amount of funding that we would have available to do Phase One.
And why do you need a federal grant to do that? We have the money to do this.
It's the direction we're looking at right now.
You're trying to get a grant?
Yes, sir. Through Desert Lakes to pay for a portion of this. There are fees coming in. This would help us speed this process up, and as well as going to give Public Works time to work with council through the city manager in what direction, as far as the remaining of the project will be funded and how that will happen.
Okay. Well, I'm just a little confused about Phase One, because we're already going to put in part of the drain underneath the freeway. That's already...
Yes, sir. That is part of the overall design.
So is Phase One just figuring out which is the, what property we're going to need and right away, and stuff like that? Is that what that is?
No, sir. It's actually building a portion of this that will be most beneficial. The remaining phase is coming in the future, and that needs to work through you as the council and the city manager in what direction that we need to take with our flood fees, whether that goes to the flood project and built through there or through us. So that's the direction we've been given to approach this.
Mr. Carrigan.
There's an opportunity that the city is pursuing to obtain a federal grant approximately $5 million from the Desert Lakes Terminal Program, which is already funded by the federal government. And if we're able to receive that grant, we would use our pay-as-you-go funding from our rates and put together a project that would accomplish actual construction out on the drain. There would be following phases, and it's those following phases that get us more into the regional project, where we would be looking for bonds, which we're trying to push out to that new agencies, so that they're carrying the bonds and doing those projects on a regional basis. But we thought the $5 million opportunity was too good to pass up, especially makes good use of the revenues that we're already collecting, and would have begun the process of making this correction in a part of our community which is heavily impacted.
Don't misunderstand me. I like the $5 million ticket. You said we can't do Phase One without the $5 million. That's where I'm confused.
Because we wouldn't have the money additionally. Right now, we have about 2.8 for pay-as-you-go.
Pay-as-you-go, okay, that's the difference right there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Carrigan. For affluent, we really don't have any projects here. Obviously, there's not a lot of expansion going on. What this is, is really identified to take care of this system. It's a newer system. It is a pressurized system. So our concerns mostly are in operations and maintenance and emergencies. So if this blew up, it could be very expensive having to fix it. Right now, we don't have anything identified, and we don't anticipate any work to happen on our fluid system.
Okay, Chris, we've got another question. Mr. Carrigan.
Chris, you're talking about affluent. Aren't we maxed out on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So just to let everybody know that if, we really don't, even if we had the money, we couldn't do anything, because we're not allowed to take any more affluent from the river, right?
Yes, sir, this time.
Or not from the river, but from our facility. Okay.
Capital projects funds. The next two funds I'll discuss are Fund 1404 and 1405. Both of these funds are very challenged, as I spoke to you before about. For 1404, the funding sources, it's really from general funds. We're spinning down the remaining balance from previous year's transfers. This also includes solar generation rebates, part of our sustainability, and any energy grants that we have. That's all under this fund. It is very specific, when you get to solar generation and energy grants, what you can use that money for. And that is not, unfortunately, salaries. Identification, Public Works Engineering and Maintenance Staff review here again, any excessive maintenance for service operations of our facilities, where we spend a lot of time and our money with our personnel, and what is the cost benefit to get, you know, turn this into a capital project, or is it something we have to band-aid and keep going? The projects are prioritized by the following: structural integrity, life safety. If the roof is caving in, or the building's going to fall over, or somebody's going to hurt, that's priority number one when we're dealing with this fund. Priority number two, HVAC, mechanical, electrical. People aren't comfortable, they're not going to work. And if we don't have the power for them, they can't run their computer. So that's our second priority. Accessibility issues are grant matching opportunities. I work with our accessibility committee. This is areas for specifically our cities, not your sidewalks and that, but specifically getting into our facilities. Last year, one of the projects you saw was at the police department with the ramp that we installed. These are projects that are identified by that committee, and we work with them to see what we can do to make them more accessible. Plus, you have sometimes the grants come in. What opportunities and what funds do we have to manage these grants to work and do the project? Workability, use of space, critical to operational effectiveness, that's the kind of remodel we're looking at. If there's really an issue, whether it be parks, PD, fire, here, is there a remodel that we need to do just because operationally it's not functional in that facility? That's where this would fall. Last but not least, comfort in operating. If it needs paint, something, or you just want to move a wall, it's on the bottom of the list. Right now, as challenged we are, unfortunately, that's going to be moved out. And again, we take input from the council advisory boards and the citizens based on accessing our facilities and coming in and any comments they have, and any concerns you do. Some of the projects are, they're very generic in nature. City Facility ADA mitigation. Right now, I do sit on that advisory committee. We haven't had a lot of issues here of late. We've taken care of a lot of them, but we have set aside $10,000 to deal with any issues that we come up from that committee meeting. We have city, general city facility maintenance improvements. Looking back over the last two to three years, we've spent about $300,000 a year on our facilities, whether it be roofs, mechanical, electrical, all things that actually need to keep them operational, not really any beautification projects. So between this fund and 1405, this is where we're looking at a lot of our general maintenance items. The last item on there, there's, we need to do a vapor buried fire station one. We have a lot of issues with water and overflow coming into the basement. We need to protect that basement. It's starting to affect the facility. With that ditch being so close, there's a lot of issues with the North Truckee drain that runs through there as well. This project will clean that out, and it affects our elevators. The green capital projects, this here, they're identified, this is part of the solar generations and our solar photovoltaic. We just made application a couple of weeks ago through NV Energy. We have yet to hear back if we're getting anything yet. All these projects listed are dependent on getting those grants from solar, from NV Energy. We cannot move forward without those grants. So here we are, listing prices and things, but it's all through the grants that these projects will happen. There's no city general funds going into this. 1405, this is your Advilarama. Special note, in State 75th Legislation, Bill 543, they redirected all the Advilarama personal property tax revenue to the state's general fund for the next two fiscal years. So I'm spinning down what is left. This fund will disappear. I've kind of covered with you again the project identification and prioritizations. It's very similar to 1404. The catch with 1405 is it has to be major renovations. You can't do more minor maintenance that it's beyond the 5,000 mark for maintenance. We need to do CIP, but these need to be major renovations, and it's spelled out in NRS how you can spend it on our facilities. So on this, we are, we have several roofs that have been identified that we're keeping an eye on. We're doing our best to band-aid these things. However, if one pops up and we need to repair it, we need to be able to get after it. The other one is our HVAC and our boiler. We have several HVAC and boiler systems that are original. Some of them from the '60s and '70s. We're really trying to keep an eye on this, band-aid them as best as possible, but if we need to replace them, we have to have the ability to do that. Parks projects, you have several funding sources. 1402 is their main fund that comes in, and a lot of their franchise fees, this is where they go. 1406, 07, and my typo there is actually 1408, those are actually park construction districts, okay? You are required that the monies come in, stay there. They cannot be used for salaries. They have to be used for projects in those districts. 1402 is to take care of majority of the rest of the parks and their franchise fees. So you have general fund, franchise, residential construction taxes for park construction, rehab, and improvements. For us to identify project identification, Parks Department is really in the lead on this. They work with their administration and their maintenance staff, and they'll work with us and engineering to review any major projects or things of that nature. They're also looking at excessive service for operations in their facilities and infrastructure. That could be the playground equipment, that could be the facilities at Golden Eagle, Deer Park, any structures, not even with the pole, but structures around it. What's excessive in service and cost and maintenance? Because we are looking at less bodies. We need to be smart with our money. And again, here, council comment, advisory from the Parks Advisory Committee, and citizen concerns. Several parks projects. One is the ongoing from the Whitewater project from Rock Park. Yes, sir.
Chris, I just wanted to bring this up, because even some of the people that belong to Builders Association did not realize we had impact fees here in Sparks. You know, because Reno's trying to implement some fees. And I just wanted to point out that the park fees that you're talking about, the construction park fees, are the ones that, when you build a new home in the city of Sparks, so much of the money goes to the fund to build the parks that are actually used by the neighborhood in which they collected it.
Yes, sir.
And I just want to put that on the record, because a lot of people didn't realize that we did that in Sparks.
We do collect impact fees, and that's where those districts, what they're set up for, to maintain those or build new.
Yeah, and I think we have, what, four, close to $4 million in that-
The various districts, if you want to cross.
I think, on all three, something like $4 million. Okay, thanks.
We have continued habitat monitoring with our Rock Park project. That's a five-year process, so that's part of our permit for building that park. So a lot of people question, "Why is this in here?" That's why it's there, it's part of our permit with the Corps, and Fish and Wildlife and Endo what they require. We have some regional trail and upgrades and improvements we need to do throughout the city on our asphalt and our concrete, regional trails. Les Hicks is one of the ones that has some problems with the play equipment, you know, and then we have some, several shelters throughout the parks that we're going to be replacing. These, here again, these are some highlights from the total. I don't think you'd want to go line by line on every project. Community Development Block Grant, working with Tracy Wheeler on this. The funding source is the federal government. Here again, this isn't city general funds, this is federal government money. The project identification, we worked with the grant administrator and the engineering staff, and we looked at the areas that we can use this funding in. That's the other thing. You can only use these in specific areas of the community. We take in council and citizen concerns as well. The project that's identified right now is pedestrian street improvements. Ideally, where we're going to use this money is with the Prater Way stewardship project with Endo. If we're able to get through Endo in their process, that will be coming later, most likely in the fall, and this money would be earmarked with the Endo stewardship money to build that project. Where we're lowering electrical and we're doing improvements on the north side of Prater that you've seen on the south side already, that really cleaned it up, we're hoping to do that on a portion of the north side. There's two other phases in the future, but this would really help us get that phase done. The municipal court, they have their own funding source through the administrative assessments, and it's ideally set up for their municipal court facilities and operations. The projects here, we identify, working municipal court administrator, works with the judges, works with those from public works engineering and our maintenance staff. Here again, we look at what issues and what costs have been through maintenance or upgrades at the need, through council or citizen concerns. One of the projects that's been identified there, working with IT, is the virtual computers. They're coming up on requiring a replacement of most of their PC systems throughout. By doing this system, we're actually able to buy a cheaper monitor and computer system for that. So instead of trying to do refreshing and redoing their computers at a higher cost, by doing this, they can actually get cheaper PC systems to operate it. Also, it leads us to the ability to do what's called voiceover IP phone systems. There was a big push prior to our IT to do that. Saves us a lot of money. So this is almost a test case project as well. Not only are we going to save money on buying new computers there once this is done, but it's also going to leave us the ability to start looking at that voiceover IP and implementing that in the rest of our facilities, and how we can do it, and what it'll save us.
Questions?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Chris, what's the limitations on this, on these funds? I mean, it's an assessment assigned, I'm assuming, and I don't know the history, that's what I'm asking. I'm assuming this is a fee charged on guests at the courthouse-
Yes, sir.
-you've got to pay a fine.
Those are fees through that system, through the courthouse, and the fees that you pay for coming to visit them.
What are the limitations on those, on those funds?
This one, I would actually not be able to fully explain whether or not it's into salaries. I know a portion is earmarked for projects, I'd have to refer to finance for that.
I mean, do they, do they bring in $151,000 a year on these fees? And I mean, can it be used? Because it looks like we're using it all for upgrades, but can it pay the utility bills? Can it pay, you know, security for the building? What can it pay for?
Mr. Smith, Steve Driscoll, Assistant City Manager, for the record. My knowledge is not completely up to date, but there are two different assessment fees. The particular fee that's being used here can be done, it only can be used for facility upgrades and remodels, and as part of those remodels, you can, you can do the technological component along with it. It's not allowed for any operational expenses, and it's not allowed to do anything to the judges' chambers, with the exception of technological upgrades. But it can be used for remodeling the building or doing building efficiencies.
So all five of these fall under that category?
Yes, sir.
So they have their own guaranteed source every year, they get remodels done every year, where they're-
They have two, against Steve Driscoll for the record, they have two assessment fees. One is dealing with training that they are mandated to do through the administrative offices, the courts, for the judges and the staff. And then the second one, which is the one that's here, is for building upgrades. And they are based on, they're add-on fees based on convictions and fines assessed to convictions.
Can we just go ahead and do a tad bit more research and get a report back to the council, so we know exactly where those funds-
The court would have a full accounting of how much they collect and how much is available for these projects.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that these are totally restricted and are not available for something else.
Absolutely. And the projects in the past couple of years have been HVAC system modification and rehabilitation. Their systems were old, they were deficient, we were losing a lot of money on them, as well as over time, there'd been walls put up throughout, and the systems didn't work throughout there, so we're having a lot of heating and cooling problems. We also, upcoming this year with this year's funds, we're going to, we've got a roof that's failing, we've got to replace it. So those are nature of projects that we've done with those funds.
I mean, are we paying staff's times for management, all of these things?
We do have a staff cost associated with it when they engineer.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
The last two, we will actually discuss in the redevelopment agency, but I did want to identify to you that with the room tax fund, that is part of the city council's purview. Both of these, based on the last council meeting. I know at a later date, they're going to be doing a redevelopment agency workshop, as well as working with city council, and truly identifying what we'll be using those redevelopment funds for, and the room tax fund, which is very restrictive in what its nature can be used for. And that would be it, sir.
Mr. Salerno. Chris, give me an update on what ever happened to the repairs on Lark and Circle?
On Lark and Circle? Actually, Lark and Circle was put off, and that's actually part of an RTC project now that is going out this summer. Currently, we just recently bid, and Gear Hart and Berry was the low contractor for replacing the storm drain. RTC will be right behind us doing the south half of that roadway.
So we do the whole road instead of just patching?
Most of it. The north side that where we'll be impacted by the Norchuckee drain in the future, we're not currently doing. Everything on the south side, that borders the flood protection area, and what is it, pick and pull and all that, that will be redone now.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, looking for a motion. Mr. Smith?
Move to approve the city of Sparks CIP for fiscal years 2010 through 2011, as outlined to staff through 2014 through 2015.
Mr. Schmidt?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Schmidt to approve Agenda Item 6.1. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thanks, Chris, appreciate it. Okay, 6.2, discussion and possible approval of Amendment Number Two to the Cooperative Agreement for Services Related to the Operation of the Homeless Community Assistance Center between the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the City of Sparks. Tracy Wheeler, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, for the record, Tracy Wheeler, grant administrator. And as Mayor Martini pointed out, you have in front of you the Second Amendment to, the Second Amendment, to our cooperative agreement between the three jurisdictions. This particular amendment follows the action that all of you took with the other two localities on the May 3 meeting. Primarily discusses a funding resource, something that all of you have been working diligently towards finding. This particular funding resource is a reallocation, if you will, of the equivalent of one cent of Washoe County funds and half a cent of Reno, half a cent of City of Sparks, to provide approximately $1.97 million over the course of fiscal year 2010, 2011, towards the operating services for the Shelter and Resource Center located on Record Street in the city of Reno. And I'm available if you have any questions.
Questions for Tracy, Mr. Carrigan.
Sean, this is the half cent that you put in the budget that we approved a couple weeks ago, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks.
Further questions? Not looking for a motion, Ms. Ratty.
I move to approve Amendment Number Two to the Cooperative Agreement for Services Related to the Operation of the Homeless Community Assistance Center between the City of Reno, Washoe County, and the City of Sparks.
Do you have a second? Mr. Salerno?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve Agenda Item 6.2. Amendment Number Two to the Cooperative Agreement for Services Related to the Operation of the Homeless Center. Any further discussion? Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Mark.
My only concern with this, Tracy, I'm going to support this, because we did in the past two, is that next year, they come back and say, "We still need more money, and we can't keep going in the same well." So I've made a suggestion, and I don't want to foul up the works or go back to the other entities, but to do this on a multi-year basis, where it's, you know, here's five years, this is what your budget's going to be, don't come asking for anything else. So just keep that in the back of your mind.
Thank you.
Ms. Ratty.
And I agree with Councilman Smith in that I believe that this is a temporary solution, and it gets us through the next year. And so I think, you know, Councilman Smith was focusing on the expense side, and we want a budget for the next five years. But I also think that we're going to have to continue to work with the other jurisdictions for a permanent solution on the income, the revenue generating side. I'm hoping that at some point in the future, we really could get to a more consolidated model, like what we did with the animal shelter, where we're flipping our penny and getting a lot more bang for the buck, because it's going over to the county. But I realize that there are some barriers to that at this point, and so this is a, this is a one-year solution, and we'll be having a conversation about this again next year.
One of the items that was brought up during all the discussions was, and the reason why this is indicated as only for one year, is the concern based upon the funding sources for the county. There were some concerns that that actually could be, they could be subject to some direction from the state. So that's why they did request that a caveat be put in there, that it be for one year. However, we will be starting a process much sooner than typical. Rather than, obviously, coming in at the last minute, our hope is to start our process in December, to have further discussions. One of the items, and we'll discuss this in the next agenda item, is in future years, the city of Sparks has the capacity, rather than using general fund dollars, to use a portion of our community development block grant funding for this. So we do have the capacity, if it would be the city's will, to utilize those dollars and dedicate that as a more consistent funding source. So we do have a few items there. We want to avoid continually building the plane as we're flying.
This is a good first step, I think, in getting us to some kind of permanent funding source, like we did with animal control. I mean, we've been hassling over this for too long, after it was built, got a good facility, we need to take advantage of it, so. Mr. Smith?
And I'd just like to thank the mayor, because it was his idea to do this, and we've been struggling for a long time on how to fund this, and it kind of brought everybody together, so good job, Manon, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I believe we have a motion on the floor, do we not, Madam Clerk?
Yes, you do.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Okay, next is public hearing item. Public hearing, consideration and possible approval of the program year 210 through 214, Community Development Block Grant and Home Consortium Consolidated Plan and, this is a fiscal, program year 2010, Annual Action Plan. Ms. Wheeler?
Again, for the record, Tracy Wheeler, grants administrator. Need, and as the mayor pointed out, you have in front of you, the city has to go through an exercise, as part of our entitlement process, we have to provide a five-year plan. And then related to that five-year plan, each year, we have to provide a single-year plan that provides more detail of what we plan on doing over the course of the next five years. We're at that juncture at this time. What you have is the five-year plan that will begin covering the period starting July 1st of 2010, and take us through June 30th of 2014. As Chris Cobb pointed out in the CIP, we do have, we've allocated some of our dollars to be utilized towards, hopefully leveraging funds with other resources to providing better, what was called a more suitable living environment, utilizing HUD's language, to continue to improve our community via pedestrian improvements. In our five-year plan, we've also indicated the desire to either through the Washoe County Human Services Consortium, or via some funding mechanism for the homeless shelter, utilize a portion of our entitlement dollars for funding those resources. And also, we've made the case to continue funding our single-family owner occupied rehabilitation program, which provides emergency grants up to $2,500, and deferred payment loans up to $20,000 for qualifying low-income families. And then finally, we'll be utilizing a portion of our dollars to pay for things like what's termed planning and administration, which is the administration of your grant. We use a portion of those dollars, we consult out for fair housing activities, which we are required to do by law. And also, for part of our continuum of care process, we utilize a small portion of our planning and admin dollars towards the facilitation of our review of applications. And each year, we have successfully brought well over $1 million into the community for supportive services and housing for the homeless. And if you have any questions, I'm here.
Questions for Tracy. Okay, this is a public hearing item, so I'm going to open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience like to speak to this particular agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for action. Ms. Ratty.
Could you touch a little bit on how, I mean, have we made any decisions on specifically on how this plan will affect the Human Services Consortium funding process? Are we not there yet?
We're not there yet.
Okay.
What you have in the plan is, we will continue to fund the Human Services Consortium process through fiscal year 2010, 11. And what Councilwoman Ratty is referring to, and what I've alluded to, there's a number of things happening in the community right now due to budget reductions. There is the potential that our partners might not be able to come to the table in future years for the Human Services Consortium. Also, we have the recognition that we have a continued budget situation with our homeless shelter. And what we've done is include language in the plan over the course of the five years to give us the ability to review year by year where our dollars would be best utilized.
So just to say it one more way, we are, in our plan, maintaining flexibility to be responsive to a variety of scenarios.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm not looking for a motion. Not that difficult. Ms. Ratty?
I would move to approve the program year 2010, 2014, Community Development Block Grant and Home Consortium Consolidated Plan, and program year 2010, Annual Action Plan.
Do you have a second? Mr. Salerno?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Salerno to approve Agenda Item 7.1. Further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Tracy. Appreciate it. Okay, next is comments from the council or city manager, or city attorney. Mr. Carrigan?
Just a reminder that we will be conducting the public hearing on our tentative budget, as well as taking action on our final budget in a special city council meeting, which will occur on Tuesday, May 18th at 9:00 a.m. in these chambers, and we invite any member of the public to that session.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further business, we're adjourned. Call the order of the redevelopment agency meeting of Monday, May the 10th. With a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Vice, or Agency Secretary Patterson, Agency members Ratty, Salerno, Martini- Vice, or Agency Secretary Patterson, Agency members Ratty, Salerno, Martini.
Here.
Carrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
Chief Administrative Officer Carey.
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams.
Here. Present. Public comment, I do not have any cards, would you like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll bring it back to the agency. I need approval of the agenda. Move to approve is outlined by staff, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Recommendation to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of April 26, 2010. We have a motion, how about a second? Second. We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our regular meeting of April 26. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passing unanimously. Okay, consideration and possible approval of the portion of the city of Sparks five-year CIP for fiscal years beginning July 1, 2010, for redevelopment areas 1 and 2. Chris.
Good afternoon again, members of the agency. Chris Cobb, City of Sparks Capital Projects Manager. I'm here before you this evening for the redevelopment CIP. As I stated previously in the council meeting, currently, it's in a state of flux in essence. Armando Rinalles will be working with the redevelopment agency, identifying projects